Okay, the problem that we're having right now before we even start is we have no note taker. Abby let Judy know that she wasn't going to be able to do it. Not about the last, I don't know if she let Judy know at the last minute, but I found out at the last minute. Is there anybody that would be willing to take notes on this mission?
To really have the ability to use a computer or anything?
Yeah, I got a pen.
Yeah, no, I'd rather participate in the meeting.
Yeah, I would too, but I don't know if you can have a meeting where nobody could take notes. That's the problem. Jared usually takes notes, but Jared's running, I mean, not, he doesn't really take notes, but Judy suggested, I asked him, but he's running the Zoom. I mean, I can take notes and look back at the recording and do them from there.
So is she no longer doing them at all?
No, she's gonna do it, she's ill.
Is it possible for her to do them from the video?
From the Zoom? She said she was ill, I don't know what's going on. She told Judy she wasn't able to do it, so I don't feel like I should. I don't really have any way to contact her. Andy took notes before, she's in, she might do it.
So you should disclose capture on that record.
Oh, it will record? It already said it was being recorded.
You should, it should record disclosure.
Did we let Andy in? Was she? Martha and Rose, were you in a waiting room to get into the Zoom?
No, I'm here.
You didn't have to go into a waiting room to get into the Zoom, though?
No, no, I just got in. I just got back in.
Okay, I think what I'm gonna try to do is go on the town website on my phone and send her the Zoom. Did she have the wrong, oh, I'll just tell her to go on the town website and get on that Zoom. Okay, okay, I'm gonna tell her, click on the Zoom. The town website. Okay, now she'll get in the right Zoom, because she's offered to take notes before. Well, I'm gonna proceed and I'll take, if worse comes to worse, I'll take notes off of the recording so that we can proceed. Okay, roll call, I guess we don't have a recording secretary, so we have three members present and we have Andy, I guess, trying to get into the Zoom. And I don't know if Judy is also, she's not texting me. Oh, here you are, yay Judy! Any chance you'd take notes? Okay, we're totally stuck, but I'm gonna... Oh, no, I'm sorry. I wonder if Abby would do it from the recording? We could ask her, okay, if she doesn't do it, I'll do it.
I can start, but it can start to come off us.
Yeah, I don't want you to have to do that. All right, all right, so we're gonna go, and I'm gonna do my opening, I'm not gonna do my opening statement because I got Eric here and I got Scott here and they've both heard it already. Let's have considerations of any, in roll call by the recording secretary, we have four members present and one trying to get into the Zoom. Any, I'm gonna do considerations of changes, additions or removals to the agenda. Anybody have anything? Hi Ted, by the way. Hey, how are you?
I have none.
Hello down there.
Sounds like you're far away.
I know, I'm gonna take Andy's place.
Okay. Approval of minutes, July meeting minutes. Do people have a chance to look those over?
Yeah, Abby sent me, I didn't really have time, but it looks like maybe a correction to that.
Okay. I had a couple of minutes.
She said you should add the following, at 6:00, Terry calls to the public hearing to order.
It wasn't a public hearing in July, though. That was one thing I have, she's putting like, public hearing on the top of everything and it's a public meeting, but it's a general membership meeting, so that was...
Maybe we should just strike that.
Yeah, I wanna let her know that, that was something I had on here.
And then where it says call to order, I think she just forgot the time, so we could just, on Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, at 6:00 AM?
Yeah.
And then there was one more. Motion on alternate, Judy motioned Ryan second, amended motion.
So she had the wrong person that made the motion who seconded it? She's not part of that?
It's wherever we were talking about the... It's toward the end, I think.
Okay.
When we went back over the...
Can I have your notes on that? And then I have a few things. Ted and, did you guys have anything?
I did.
You had corrections too, right?
Yep.
I'll put them all on the same thing here.
Okay, so my first one's on page five.
Yep.
It is the second square bullet in that top portion where it says, Ryan says the historic district requires a separate conversation. He notes that the view of the other side of the view, there are many issues. Maybe strike, he notes that the view of the other side of the view. Because I didn't, I don't know what that means, does it mean anything?
Gee, can you send me the ones that she gave you through text?
Sure.
Okay, so strike, he knows that the view on the other side of the view, strike that whole thing.
Yep. And then I have another one on page six. Quarter of the way down, white bullet point, Rose thinks we should streamline so that we don't have to go to the DRB. It should be DRB. And then also under hotel, same page six, Ryan thinks this should follow the motel term. That needs, I don't know, again, that needs to...
You want that to be struck?
Yeah.
Ryan needs to, what was it?
Ryan thinks this should follow the motel term.
Okay, I should be doing this on the notes, that way it's easier.
I have my corrections on here, too, I can give to you.
Okay, you can just hand me that?
Yep.
Do you have anything else, Ryan?
Nope.
Ted, did you have anything?
I'm good.
Andy, are you in? Did you have any corrections on the minutes? Andy's there now. Andy, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I had a couple things where she said, our C, short-term rentals, says we should get ahead of this so that we get the permit fees and not the state. She said something about, she didn't say that, but that's what was said. I mean, she wrote. My short-term, my phrase. Anyway, it was the opposite of what she wrote. She said the state, we should get ahead of this so the state would get more money instead of that we would. Anyway, I'll talk to her about that. Maybe we should put this off until next month and just give her our concerns. She's probably gonna have something to say about it, too. And then also, she's listing herself as a member of the board, under board member, she's listing her name. And she's the recording secretary, so I was just gonna have her clear that up. And she also, in the second bullet on rules and procedures, she wrote, we need to change resident to citizen instead of citizen to resident, or something like that. Under rules and procedures.
I agree, I think we should wait and just...
Yeah, okay, so let's... We all agree, we're gonna just hold our notes till next time and talk it over with her. Okay. I don't wanna bomb on her either. Okay, so we're gonna table the July minutes. Comments from citizens. We have Jeannie and Eric and Bruce and Scott. You guys have any comments? Hey Eric?
Eric, I'll go on the trail segment. I just wanna encourage the board once again to put pressure on the town and on yourselves to make sure that the agenda is widely distributed. There's important topics that are being discussed at these meetings regularly and we have very little attendance. Most recently with the post office being closed. I don't think you're meeting the open meeting law, because that was one of the spots where you posted, you're required to post the agenda, and since they've been closed, it hasn't been posted there. So I don't think you're meeting that requirement under the open meeting statute. But I just wanna make sure that folks in town have an opportunity, easy opportunity, to get this information out to them and that we do a better job in disseminating this, because there's important things that are being discussed tonight that really should have more folks here to talk about. Thank you.
I'll just say, that's something I could check with Diane about, because Diane is the one that makes sure that it is run properly.
Should we consider social media?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
I don't think that that's an acceptable form.
That depends on which social media.
It has to be in two locations.
Sure, we can satisfy those requirements, but what's stopping us from putting screenshots on social...
Not as an official.
Not as an official, but, I mean, we wanna get more people involved, more people would see it there.
Which one are you thinking about?
I'm saying if we post the agenda...
Which social media platform?
That, I, you know, you know, chemo locals, well, I don't know, local class, I think off of all that, but where else to get the word out?
The library?
Sure, you know...
When I, when I warn my...
Looking for volume.
The Democratic meeting, I wanted, I wanted that, because I figure that reaches people then.
Looking for volume, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, so the statute reads two or more places, so we're not limited to two. We can certainly do more than two. It's town hall plus two additional spots.
It is on the website, too, always. Jeannie, do you have any comments? I guess they can't hear you on the Zoom, though. Oh, thank you, Eric.
Thank you, thanks. My comment is regarding the public hearing that was supposed to be at the village meeting last, the last month, and I think we're all talking about the same thing. If you want participation, you need to get that out to people so they know when that public hearing is and what it's about. And I was here for that meeting and I didn't know that it had been canceled. But afterwards, I thought about it and I thought, well, hmm, maybe there wouldn't have been that many people here anyway.
Yeah.
So I encourage you to do whatever you need to do to get the word out to people. And it may be social media, because that's what people do now. They, not everybody goes to the post office and they sure don't go to Rockersville. So however, because that's gonna be a very important meeting, the next village meeting, as we all know. So it's important that people be there in support of your, your plan. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Check with Diane on both those points. Is there, are there any other public comments? Bruce or Scott, did you wanna? Okay, moving on.
I have a concern.
Oh, okay.
Well, if Diane didn't post them in two places, then this meeting will have to be done over again.
I'm sure she did down there.
I'm sure she did, she must be having a good word with somebody else. But we should really check that.
Okay.
Okay.
Post office isn't really important, social media is a great one. I received solicitation from U S D S for mass animals, consider that.
Does anybody have another suggestion of a place in town that could take the place of the post office in the meantime?
The library.
The library?
It's a cool public place.
This was touched on, I think, at the last placeward meeting, but a digital marquee sign on the town hall. Right? I know that's way, that's way out of our purview, but, so, definitely, point taken, Eric, yeah, and Jeannie.
I think that we can't have that according to zoning. They go, wow, digital marquises.
Really, so then we could have, we could have the old, you know... Sure.
Yeah, bulletin board in front of the town hall, like in glass, like they have it spained.
Oh, that's a, that's a shame.
Okay.
Maybe that can be, I mean, it would be nice to have.
Anyway.
Okay, also, no more comments? All right, article number seven, municipal planning grant, streamlining the permitting process. Rose and I met with Martha and Allison and were pretty surprised, Martha was, well, she wasn't surprised, but I was when she said that we actually ended up moving 22 different items out of 44 and getting a lot of that done. So we met and I'm gonna let Martha take it away. Martha, do you wanna jump in about your chart work?
Sure, am I able to share my screen? Do you know?
Yes.
Okay.
Becca, she's able to share her screen, right, Martha? Okay.
Okay. Oops. Sorry. It says host disabled participants screen sharing. So... So whoever's hosting has to enable screen to screen share.
They're working on it, Martha?
Okay.
She said to give it a try. Here we go.
Okay. So what I was hoping to do, because it gets difficult flipping back and forth, put this up kind of as an overview, but I'll probably be mostly sharing other documents. But I don't know if everyone has a copy of this, so I wanted to at least start here. My plan was to run through these various uses that are on the left. In the center, it says which districts they're permitted or conditional or not allowed in. And then the notes are just kind of things that we've discussed or that we need to discuss. So, starting at the top of accessory dwelling, I wanna pull up the definition, draft definition in the regulations. So I'm gonna have to... Sorry. Let me try it once again. There we go. So this is the draft document of zoning regulations. And definition section. We pop up to accessory dwelling units. There we go. Everyone can see that?
Yeah.
Can't read us.
Well, hopefully you've already, at least the folks on the commission have already seen it. The main question I had, this is pretty much the new definition from Act 47. But one thing that is optional, as far as I understand, is this part about whether it's on an owner occupied lot or not. So that was something that you all will need to decide. You can, your accessory dwelling units to, or you can have them as permitted uses only on owner occupied lots, if you want, or you can just allow them as accessory units, accessory to a single unit on any lot.
Yeah, I would think any lot.
I agree.
Yep.
So yeah, I was gonna say, if the intent is to increase...
Living units.
Yeah, living units for people, then why would we only have it be an owner occupied?
Andy, what's your feeling about that?
I agree, it doesn't, it shouldn't be limited to owner occupied.
What do you think, Rose?
Yeah, I agree too, I agree also, or we would be, we would be in a lot of trouble in Ludlow.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess the decision's been made about that.
There you go, it's gone. The next thing on the chart was, I wanna skip over ag forestry for now, so we talked about changes to home occupations to allow them in both attached and detached accessory dwellings. I mean, I'm sorry, attached and detached accessory structures. So that is, sorry to make everyone seasick by jumping around, but...
Well, I think it's necessary in this case.
Yeah. So... No provisions of these regulations shall infringe upon the right of any resident to use as a permitted use an accessory structure or a minor portion of the residence for an occupation which is customary, et cetera, et cetera. So it just enables the use of an accessory structure in addition to a small portion of the house.
I agree, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes, we're in agreement.
Okay, great. Daycare centers, we talked about the need for a definition for an adult daycare center.
Which you sent us.
Yeah. And I did send it, I'm gonna try and pull it up.
I'll just read it while she's pulling it up. A state certified, community-based, non-residential center where adults with physical and/or cognitive impairments can come during the day and receive a range of professional health, social and therapeutic services, as well as a nutritional meal and valuable social interaction. Adult daycare centers may also provide educational programs for family members and caregivers.
I like it, I think it's very specific, it's great.
I think it covers everything.
Andy, what do you think?
Agreed.
Rose, you good with that definition?
Yep, that's good.
Okay. Moving along.
Very fast today. Their screen. Right, so childcare home. So childcare home, for six or fewer children, you have to allow that as a permitted use. Then for no more than six full-time and for part-time children, you can either allow that as a permitted use also, or you can allow it as a permitted use but require site family view.
I say we just allow it as a permitted use, because we need more.
Yeah.
People are desperate for them.
Yep.
Agreed.
Agreed.
And the state regulates it really well, so I don't think that needs to be a concern.
Well, I think, I think that's the only thing we get to decide about, is that part.
That they will regulate it if they say yes.
Okay. We're good on that?
Great.
Andy, embarrassed, did you weigh in?
Oh no, I said it was good. Thank you.
Okay.
Jumping to tourist homes. Right now, you have them combined, tourist home, private ski club, and then you also have a private club as a separate thing. So I was gonna suggest that you separate those two, you know, two different uses, tourist home and private club. And private ski club can just be included as a private club. And then I did tweak the definition for tourist home to be more consistent with your other changes that you've made to commercial lodging and residential uses, so to use the term short-term rather than temporary and transient, because you've now defined those in your regulations.
Question, what, when we say like motel or hotel, I'm just wondering if this, if there's an overlap. I know this isn't specific enough, let's say, to be a motel, because it's the outside doors, et cetera. But is this the same, I mean, what makes this different from an inn, for example?
I think tourist homes are more like Airbnbs, where people open up their homes, a small portion of their home, or rent it out. But I could be wrong about that.
I think the difference is in a private dwelling, that these are in private dwellings and inns aren't private dwellings.
Like that place that used to be on Pleasant Street, that Red Door?
Yeah.
Did you say inns are not private dwellings? Sorry, is that what you're saying, Terry?
Yeah, that it's an establishment in a private dwelling, whereas motel would not be a private dwelling. Or an inn, part of it might be that.
Can, do you mind if we just scroll up to what we have for inn?
Well, first off, why don't we go ahead and break off the tourist home from the private ski club? Because they're not the same. We already had talked about that, I thought, Terry, that...
Yeah, yeah, we, because we were looking at what actually happens in Ludlow. And those kind of ski clubs are kind of jointly owned by, some of them are jointly owned by many families.
Yeah, so that's, that's a definition all in itself.
So we wanna break that, you guys agree that we wanna break that off, private ski club from tourist home? That is a different...
Put it under private club.
Yes, yeah, and that's right, we talked about it being a private club.
Yeah.
And not making it, not quoting it in here with tourist home.
Yeah, that's totally different.
Put it under private club. That's why it's crossed out.
Yeah, she just crossed it out, so that's, that was something that we had talked about, being something totally different than tourist home. Because, and then tourist home. I don't know what that specifically is separated from an inn or, you know, all that other stuff. So it's kind of is more of the same.
Yeah, you have, this is your existing definition for private club, club restricted to members and their guests.
So, yeah, so we need a, you know, I don't know if it needs to be a private ski club specifically, but I guess it can.
Well, it might not be a ski club, though, maybe it's a golf club or something.
Yeah, because, I mean, it could be, you could add, you know, golf, ski, the Legion, that's in there. Those are all private clubs.
You can just all follow definition, I think. Eric, can you give her the mic? I promised Becca that people on Zoom would be able to hear what people said.
A rooming house could also be a private dwelling, correct? I didn't know that was covered. So someone could, in their house, decide to have part of their home be a rooming house?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fixed under this description.
Good.
Tourist home.
All right.
Yeah. So when we decide, we're gonna take private ski club out, leave tourist home the way... So when we decide, we're gonna take private ski club out, leave tourist home the way it is here?
Could you read tourist, the tourist home definition, please? I can't, I can't read it from.
I can read it. An establishment in a private dwelling that supplies short-term accommodations to transient guests for a fee.
Sure.
We got a sure from Ryan, we got a head nod from Ted.
That's good.
We good? Andy, can we move on? We got just option for tourists. Okay.
You do have, let's see. Personal service gets a little confused with retail service. Personal services includes barber, hairdresser, beauty parlor, shoe repair, shoe shine, laundry, laundromat, dry cleaner, photographed studio and pharmacy. But then you also have retail. Retail use, retail service, and I'm proposing that you use the term retail use to cover both retail stores and retail services. So here's the proposed definition includes.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not following. So personal, I mean, services are different from, from goods, right? Um, are you suggesting that we're combining the two? Maybe I didn't understand the proposal.
Well, neither is, you could do it one of two ways. You could have retail store and retail service, or just have retail use. And the retail use definition here includes shops and stores for the retail scale of goods and services, excluding drive-up, drive-through, drive-in, freestanding retail stands, gas stations, auto sales and service, trailer and mobile home sales and service, car wash and adult bookstore, adult entertainment.
Yeah, I don't see why we're stuck, why would we combine those? Because personal use seems to differ to me.
I, I think they should be combined because they're gonna be, it's a business that's gonna be run out of similar structures. So what's the, the difference between, um, you know, a small retail shop or someone running a, uh, home theater? You know, personal, so I see them, I see them being very similar structures, what they're necessarily used for, whether it be personal service or retail, I think they're, they're pretty comparable.
The reason I think we should separate them is because I think retail use is commercial, and it's being commercial districts. And I think personal service, some of those things should be in residential, they can be in residential, like a small beauty parlor, you know, so they won't, they won't interfere with residents. So I think I, we need.
I agree with Karen.
I guess maybe just look at the definition of personal services again then, and because it does include laundromats, dry cleaners, pharmacies, would all those be in a residential area potentially?
No. But I think that's why, you know, you get permits.
Pharmacy isn't a service, a pharmacy.
That's retail pharmacy.
Yeah, pharmacy, yeah, shouldn't be in personal services.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think personal service should include dry cleaning and laundry mat.
No, I, I agree.
And pharmacy, I think it goes out of there.
Okay.
In the eighteen hundreds, shoe repair, shoe shine. That's so old.
Stuff like, you know, an accountant, services could be in a home.
Yeah, definitely.
Things like that, that's a service.
And that's a personal service.
Yes.
I think you have a professional service, but let's roll down to that.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Then you've got architects, accountants, you know, lawyers. So personal service is really more of the, you know, hairdresser, barber, store, I think, beauty parlor. Maybe just redefine this to those sorts of things that you would be okay having in a neighborhood.
Just not the laundry, laundry, dry cleaner and pharmacy part. That part's just commercial.
And why a photographic studio, that sounds very retail to me.
Yeah, that does sound retail.
And leave in the shoe, shoe repair, shoe shine.
I would call that retail.
I'd like to call that obsolete for two thousand twenty-three.
No, shoe, shoe repair, maybe not shoe shine, but shoe repair is still needed.
Yeah.
But I think that's a, I think that's a commercial activity that we expect in a commercial setting.
I agree, yes.
Um, you might want to add in personal services like, you know, massage or spa. That's a personal service.
Yeah. Does that fit anywhere else? Martha, do we have spa or massage anywhere else? That's definitely a personal service.
Yoga, yoga studios?
Yoga studio.
I would add yoga, yep, massage, spa services, yoga. These are often things run out of people's homes.
Dog grooming, where's that go?
How big is the dog?
Doesn't matter.
Residential areas.
Just saying.
I know, I'm kidding. Um. So dog grooming, you often, let's say, you, it's a drop-off, right? Often, right? You don't have to stay there. So I feel like that's less personal.
Yeah. Personal to the dog, but not the owner. Okay, so we're good there? Keeping personal service but editing it quite a bit.
So let, rather than just leave it as these enumerated, I know it could cause future debate, but do you want to add a phrase and similar personal services that it, it leaves room for argument, but it, I, I think it's hard to just say these are those services. And I think it then behooves the person wanting to claim it to show that it's similar to those.
This is Allison from Mark. I just want to chime in. You guys haven't, you're just listing uses in there and you really need to define. It's a definition. You need to come up with a definition for personal services. Like you have all your other, and then like Andy said, you could say an example being or includes, but you need to define how personal services differs from retail sales.
Yeah, you're totally right in my opinion. Yep, so let's.
Can we go back to retail and then we'll sort of have what it's not, just so I can see it on the screen?
Could you, could you potentially provide us with an example at the next meeting so we don't get kind of caught up in this?
Yeah, let's do that.
This seems very repetitive.
Yeah, that word.
And could you also potentially provide other examples of these similar, these similar circumstances we're in where we're just saying, we're being far too specific?
Okay, um. I, I would suggest in the meantime, since services will start to be in both, that we say in the retail use, where it says retail sale of goods and services, we might want to put in parenthetical that don't qualify as personal services. That then helps to take those out for what we enumerate above. Otherwise, somebody say, well, I'm a, I'm a retail use versus a personal use. I think it make, you know, if you, if we're enumerating above, we, it, it's not in here, so that they're mutually exclusive.
Well, and the other thing I'm also realizing, we also have professional services, I believe, in home occupation. Am I, am I correct in that? I feel like we are crisscrossing ourselves at every juncture here.
Well, that's why we need a definition.
Yeah.
Okay. What's next, Martha?
Next, um. Recreational uses. The. So you define recreational use. Uh, for the purposes of these regulations, this will include all those activities commonly considered to be recreational in nature, and will also include as examples the following. Skiing, golf courses, horseback riding in polo fields, hunting and fishing, picnic areas, playing fields, shooting or archery ranges, snowmobile trails, swimming areas, tennis courts, walking and/or nature trails. This was, will also include buildings which are accessory to the above activities. So one of my questions is that under the list of permitted uses, there's, one of the common ones is outdoor recreational use, which is not defined. Public outdoor recreation facility, public recreation, there's just a lot of different uses, I mean, definitions for, that include the word recreational.
Well, I do think though that public is different from private, right? I, I, so I think I get that distinction. If it's recreational use supplied by the town, it's a town park. If it's a private, you know, if it's a golf course owned privately, then it, then it's disrecreational use. Is that not? I think there is probably an important need for that distinction.
I guess I'm wondering, if, if you're just regulating the use, saying it's, it's a shooting range, is it going to matter whether it's public or private?
Probably not. That's big in the news right now.
Yeah, it really is. I wonder why there's that long list. I mean, there's always new recreational things come popping up. I don't understand why we have to have that long list.
Well, so let me ask you, what, where, where in the ordinances do we impact public versus just this? If we just got rid of public, is there someplace where public recreational is impacted differently that we're not thinking about? I understand the definition, but I mean, in our ordinances, where is that versus non-public recreational?
Well, a lot of the public ones are out of our hands, because that's decided by the municipality, whether it's the town, or the state, or the government.
I just.
When we say open to the general public, I mean, most private businesses are open to the general public. I, I think the difference is, is that they, these items are owned on property or maintained by the municipality. I, I don't think this open to the general public. I think this, this, this overlaps with non-public recreational facilities.
Well, there is a, a, you know, a difference when it's owned by companies that needs permitting, um, when it's state. And, um, when Martha mentioned the rod and gun club, you know, that's kind of protected by, you know, the statute. Other ones like Fletcher Farm, if they were to do bike paths, they only really require, um, you know, local active fifty review. And, um, you know, there's so many different permitting possibilities when you go through all of the above. Now, private, um, depending on what they were doing, as we, um, see in the news lately with the gentleman who was doing the gun teaching or whatever exactly, um, if it's disturbing your neighbors, then, um, it can become a nuisance and a problem. So that might, that might be something that you, people might want to think about when it comes to recre, outdoor recreational in residential areas or in the villages and things like that.
Let me ask you something. I see public recreation below it. Do we really need public outdoor recreational facilities? I think public recreation is public land that provided for the public use and not-for-profit is probably what we mean by public.
Correct. That's probably, that's miniscule.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm not sure that we need the definition at all of public outdoor recreational facilities. And again, that's why I ask, I mean, we can do a search to see where in our ordinances that, why, where that's used as to why it's needed and if it's needed. And I think the definition needs to be more that noted about the public recreation. I, and I don't understa, I mean, I, I really think those two are kind of the same thing.
Yeah, me too.
One's more limiting.
Yeah, they can be combined.
Yeah.
That's like Dorsey Fields and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Maybe if I could, I'll put these all on one page, all the different definitions for, that have to do with recreation.
Yep.
You might be able to take the sentence, outdoor recreation facilities that is, or I'm sorry, that open to general public, such as a bike app, blah, 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 and just add that sentence under the public recreation. Because one is just saying it's outdoor on public lands, but it can also include an outdoor recreational facility. So you could just put them together, I think.
Let's just put them together. The way Judy said, we don't have to spend more time on it.
Okay, split these two together, public outdoor recreational facility and public recreation and look at possibly eliminating the recreational use. Well, I mean, you're gonna have other recreation that's not public, so I guess you're gonna need that still.
Yeah, those are ones that cost money.
Yeah.
Because they're on private land. So Judy, can you say that again so we can get that down?
So it should say public recreation and use that sentence there, an outdoor recreation use provided on public land and provided for public use and not-for-profit. And then it could say this includes outdoor recreation facilities that are open to the general public, such as bicycle path, biking trails and ball fields.
You got that, Martha, so we don't have to go back to this again? Is there any agreement?
Yes. Yeah, the key is the not-for-profit.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And you're looking at the whole thing, you can put all that information together, but the not-for-profit is the key. That's what, that's what separates it.
Okay, so moving on, that's taken care of. Okay. No, I'm glad we're doing, getting it done.
I can go to that and finish it later. So the term you actually use throughout the document is outdoor recreational use, and there isn't a definition for that. So.
So we can just take that out of there because we just covered it.
So you want to change under all the different words permitted and conditional uses? Even, I mean, you don't want to just allow public recreation?
No, we want to keep the one that says recreational use, which covers private.
Okay.
But we don't want to separate one that says outdoor.
Right.
Because all those things are outdoor. Obviously, skiing is outdoor. They're all outdoor just around.
Yeah, bowling, you could have, um, you know, you can have those tented tennis courts, pickleball courts.
Right, I'm saying there, it includes the both.
Yep, agreed. Yep, agreed. Yeah, I just did a quick search and I don't see a need to really have outdoor versus probably indoor or the, I agree. Where are you going to go?
Okay. Let's see, rooming house, I just wanted to go to the parking section. This is a minor tweak, just, I wanted to have all the commercial boarding things on one line here, hotels, inns, B and B, motel, tourist home, and then just put rooming and boarding house on a separate line because it's, it's not a commercial use, it's a residential use. If there's no objection?
No, because a lot of those people in those houses don't have cars. They don't need one space per bed, like actually I found out the bedroom with a lot of people, but they're bussing people back and forth, right? In all of these cases.
I mean, they could be, I guess not, not necessarily, but they could be.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it depends if it's employee housing or not. And this is the new stay requirement, right? Just one space per bedroom?
The new stay requirement is one space per dwelling unit.
Or dwelling unit, yeah.
Well, we can get to that, well, I can do it now since I'm right here. That's an S100 change.
Right, which we can't do anything about, so.
Right, in blue, it's, you know, one parking space per dwelling unit, except in areas that are located more than one quarter mile from public parking, in which case 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit are required rounded up to the nearest school number. So.
Judy, I love your comment, what's a half a space?
That's exactly what I was thinking, a half a car.
Okay, what's next Martha?
Government recreation area, I just wondered if you were okay with calling it a public recreation area?
Sure.
I'm fine with it.
Yes.
I'm fine.
You good Andy?
Yep.
Rose, you're good?
Yeah, that's fine. Just add it, just add it to the recreation areas.
Yeah.
The only one I can think of is like Buttermilk Falls is now a state park.
Oh, it is?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Buttermilk Falls is now a state park. Buttermilk Falls is now a state park, Andy.
No, no, I said, oh. Thanks.
Okay. It sounded like huh.
Last time you talked about veterinary care and animal hospitals, so I separated the two just by removing veterinarian from animal hospital and veterinary clinic office, a facility which provides medical care to animals but does not include an outdoor kennel or facilities for keeping animals overnight.
Right, we want to go separate it.
Yeah, okay. Marwesh, you already have a definition for that, so. You had said you wanted to circle back to municipal or private parking area, but I'm not sure specifically what you wanted to circle back to.
Does anybody remember who wanted to circle back to that?
No.
I'll look.
I mean, you do have a definition for parking area, you don't really have any separate standards in the regulations for those.
Judy's looking in a minute.
So we're talking about which, which we just repeat what we're talking about Martha, because I think I.
Municipal parking?
Municipal or private parking area is a conditional use in the RC district.
I don't see where we talked about that.
You pretty much skipped over it and said, let's come back to that. So you do have a definition. I haven't changed it. You don't have any standards other than the general conditional use standards. So there's no standards about, you know, having. What?
We're talking about a municipal or private parking area?
Yeah.
Okay, in the minutes it says, Judy says, if we don't allow this anywhere in the village aside from Village RC, it would exclude the, exclude the option to use some areas as weekend parking for the ski mountain. She asked if we should exclude all of this or use it as a conditional use. Andy says, we are going back through the results of the survey and we should circle back to this specifically.
There you go.
That's what we were talking about at our last meeting.
So potentially allowing conditional use for Village Res 2? As well?
Yes, so.
I don't really see temporary parking as being the same as a municipal or private parking area.
That's a good point.
That is a good point. You don't want people coming and going all night next to your house.
But we can't. If you want to look back at the survey and think about that, we can just.
The survey is clear, we need parking.
Yeah, the survey is.
We, we need, we need to make it available in places, many places that makes sense as we can. So does that mean, so historic preservation, we, we don't have any, we don't, we're not being allowed there right now.
Yeah, I don't want to.
It's only, it's only conditional Village Res and Village RC. I think it should also be conditional Village Res 2.
Initial Village Res 2, that's the end of our, right now.
That's all it is?
There's a municipal lot there, Southland, that's probably it, that's what I was thinking.
Well. Sure, okay. I mean, we created Village Res 2, we're not going to assign it to any other area in town, ever?
What, Village Res 2? I want to, I want to have that discussion. I think that Thompson Avenue and, you know, the little suburbs up there, I think that should be Village Res 2. I don't think all that stuff should be up there with all those homes, those little, little lawns. That's something I want to do, we didn't warn that, so we can't talk about that, but.
Sure.
Okay Martha, I hear a saying
What's the rest of the point?
That we want to put it in Village Res, but not the Preservation District, not the Village Res 2, but as a conditional use. Like it's talked about in site plans and noise and all that stuff gets talked about. Is that what people are reading to? Judy, what do you think?
Well, when I think about the Village Residential 2, I guess my thought is, we might not see it now, but you never know what could get knocked down or something like that, and it's just a parking lot. It's not a building, it's not, you know.
It's still deconditioned.
Like, like you could maybe at some point in time, who knows, you know, a house burns down or something. You might have a little parking lot that people can use to go to like Dorsey Park, because there's like no parking in that area.
Yeah, it's true, there's no parking at Dorsey Park. What do you think Ted?
It's conditional.
Conditional in the address too? What do you think Andy?
Conditional.
What do you think Rose? Rose is the one right there. Okay. So we're saying municipal lots, possibility and Village Res, Village Res 2, Village RC, not preservation.
Okay.
They paved paradise.
Okay motel. Was just going to suggest a different definition.
So you got a building that are rented as a series of sleeping units for vehicle transients, each sleeping unit consisting of at least a bedroom and a bathroom. What happened to the part of that that was like, they're accessed from the outside? I thought that was an important part of the hotel description.
Well, here's an alternate, a short-term commercial lodging facility for transients, containing up to 25 rooms that are rented as sleeping units. Each sleeping unit shall have a private outside entrance and parking space, and should include at least a bedroom and a bathroom. But then I thought better of it and maybe, maybe eliminate the whole sleeping unit reference because you don't have a definition for that. And if you, so if you don't use it, you don't have to define it.
And I don't know if it's, I don't think it's necessary. What do we think, the first definition or the second?
Second.
I'm all about the second.
The second, but I would also just like to add that the owners could also occupy the property. A lot of motels are owner occupied.
Oh, I like that.
Agreed.
Good catch. So it's a may? Or may occupy?
Shall?
Sure.
Or shall?
Not a shall?
No, not a shall.
I would say may.
May.
A lot of people have to say it if it's a may. It's a weak, weak point.
Well, they could or could not, so they could have a, like a house, so like the Timber Inn.
Oh, so you're just saying, you're just saying that, so it can be that?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So we want to add maybe owner, owner, oh, you already got it. Owner may also occupy the property.
I may say it differently, but I'll run it by you.
What do you think Rose?
Yeah, no, that sounds great.
Andy, I already heard you say yay.
Yep.
Okay, moving on.
Moving on. Hotel. I, we've talked about this before, but I was going to suggest you change this also to, instead of a building, to a commercial lodging facility. Short-term. Short-term transient occupancy, and I thought at some point someone suggested that all these different services are not necessarily common anymore.
Certainly not, but, yeah, the 24-hour desk service is, is often not occurring.
Yeah, we don't need all that.
I guess the problem is, is just making sure that how we define this doesn't coincide with how we're defining others. And maybe it's, maybe you have to say, and it's not a B and B motel, blah, blah, blah. Let's say everything that's remaining after that almost.
Well, I think what makes a difference is that we're not limiting the rooms, the number of rooms like we are. If our definitions go through the trustees, we're limiting the number of rooms to how many in our motel. And we're not here.
So instead of saying it has 24-hour desk service, you could say, you know, it, in addition, it may have one or more of the following services and then move this 24-hour desk service down there to the list of allowed additional uses.
Yep, that sounds good.
I can't, I can't read the board, so.
Are you wanting to read it too?
Yeah.
Okay, so where are we searching? A commercial lodging facility in which, A, living or sleeping accommodations are used primarily for transient occupancy on a daily basis. B, one or more common interests, entrances serve as such living or sleeping units. And C, 24-hour desk services provided in addition to one or more of the following services, housekeeping, bellhop, laundry, dry cleaning. allowable accessory uses are restaurants or other public dining facilities, bars or lounges, public banquet halls, ballrooms, meeting rooms, swimming pools and spa and fitness centers. We are.
Sounds like a hotel name.
So, so, so the suggestion is the 24-hour desk service, et cetera, the may have allow, are going to be then put into allowable accessory uses?
Yeah, almost that.
Okay, I, I would again, then carve out, because that almost, again, I think we're, have a common definition in others, but I would say, I would say, and does not meet the definitions of blank, blank and blank. Because a, a commercial lodging, sleeping or whatever for accommodation on a daily basis, I think covers three or four others. They're limited, but you have to, then how does someone know whether I'm a hotel? If I'm both a hotel and an inn, which am I dealing with? You know what I'm saying?
I hear that.
So for C, I would say, and does not fit the definitions of blah, blah, blah and blah. X, Y, Z.
Yeah, inn, rooming house, bed and breakfast.
Right, and I guess it won't be motel.
Commercial aspects to, I guess.
And does not include and, yeah. Motels and et cetera. I don't know, I think we have to define the et cetera.
That's a note from, note from still, I'll run it. I'll run a revised definition by you.
Yeah, but we don't need to revisit it, we got it straight.
I was going to say, you know, where it says about the 24-hour desk service, you just take out 24-hour and just say desk service, because they got to check them in somehow.
Yeah.
That does to me.
That's not a maybe, yeah, you're going to have a desk service some.
So you're, so you're saying you don't, you don't want a hotel with potentially hundreds of rooms to have 24-hour staffing?
What?
You don't want a hotel with potentially hundreds of rooms to have 24-hour staffing?
It's going to be a conditional use, so that's going to come up there.
Sure, but I mean.
But it doesn't have to be in the definition.
Just making a suggestion.
Well, the, I mean, you know, in Manhattan, the.
From Manchester, right?
We told a lot of the Manchester, I know, I know we did this one.
Sorry, I, I need to go soon. I just want to have a understanding of what's, what's going to be presented to the trustees at their next meeting. Are these changes going to be part of that?
No, they're not, no, these are not warranted.
Okay.
No, these are part of our municipal planning grant to streamline this permitting process.
Okay, I understand, but I just want to have a clear understanding of what's going to happen at the village trustees meeting. So people know it's important to go and what it's going to be about.
I have sent those things to Diane, rewarn. What's going to be there is the, you know, the employee housing, the change to conversions and changes of use.
Okay.
And the definitions that we worked on. The in-bed and breakfast, we're all of them, but those are the ones, and they're going to be rewarned and on the time website soon. I keep sending that in, but I think they're waiting till it's posted to the meeting to post. I'm stopping to see Diane tomorrow and ask her about what Eric was talking about and, and ask her about that, about when those are going to be posted. Okay, so Martha, we're all set on that? Don't have to revisit that again, where do we get next? Senior housing?
Senior housing. I sent this separately to you, but it's also here in the document. As specified in the Fair Housing Act, housing for older persons, senior housing means a housing facility or community that is intended and operated for occupancy by persons 55 years of age or older and is not required to rent dwellings to families with minor children, provided that at least 80% of the units must have at least one occupant who is 55 years of age or older. And the facility or community must publish and adhere to policies and procedures that demonstrate intent to operate as 55 or older housing. And the facility or community must comply with HUD's regulatory requirements for age verification of residence. That, believe it or not, is a simplified version.
Good job, simple buying it. Sounds good.
I guess I have a question, so it says it's 55 years or older, but then it says at least 80% must be 55 years of age or older.
Right.
The other 20%, not children.
Well, it says is not required to rent to children, but it doesn't say that they can. Says they're not required to.
Now, I'm just asking the question, it, it sounds a little, I don't know, contradictory.
No, I'm not, no, I, I don't think so, because it's intended and oper- No, I'm not, no, I, I don't think so, because it's intended and operated for that, that there happens to be twenty percent for this other use. I guess doesn't change the intention and the operation. And I think the eighty percent puts a, a great, you know, objective, non-subjective test on it.
I think the purpose of defining it is that you can't discriminate against in housing based on age except in a situation like this. So unless you're following regulations, then it's, then it's illegal to discriminate based on the age of the occupants, so.
Eric Allen wanted to speak.
I'm not well versed in it, but I think the difference is there are certain disabilities that are allowed into fifty-five-plus homes.
That makes sense.
I, I was thinking that as well, and I just wondered why it's not in there. It just sounds a little contradictory the way it's been.
Okay, so we're okay with it? We're okay, guys?
I'm doing it.
Yep, Andy, okay, moving on. Rose?
Okay. This one, you have an existing definition. I just didn't know why social was in parentheses.
Yeah, so just take it out.
Okay.
Um, transitional housing. I, could it? I, I don't like to use it, but should it say mental? It's, I mean, I suspect this was used in a, I don't know, a more acceptable way these days of saying things. Because emotional is not necessarily mental health, physical is not mental health.
Mental instead of social?
Why don't you say mental health?
Yeah, mental health, not mental, but mental health. I would agree with that.
I will, I want to comment on the social piece. When I think about, like, the mountainside house, that could come under the definition of social. It's for youth with family related issues or social issues.
Yeah, so let's keep it an average.
I keep it, it could be social. Maybe we could come up with a better word, but.
Is it domestic if it's family?
Right above it.
No, I was just wondering why it was in parentheses. I wasn't suggesting that you take it out.
Right. So we're just adding mental health and losing the parentheses.
Yeah.
We're ready to go.
There's a bunch of things that are under section two twenty-one point five.
We want to take emotional out of that and use mental health instead because both of them are.
No, we have both of them.
We did, okay.
We want to both.
Because I think emotional is kind of.
The same as mental.
A creative term. I think mental health is.
Okay, so we're, we want to backtrack and take out emotional, because mental health will cover emotional.
Yes.
Agreed.
Yeah, and emotional is outdated term.
Martha, isn't there a definition under the statute, what it says? Because right above what you have there, it says social and psychological therapy.
This, this is transitional supportive housing that does not meet the definition of a group home as defined in twenty-four VSA forty-four twelve. And it probably should say where, not in which, and where individuals live for a short period. But I think this is the reference to the group housing statute, not to.
Right. I didn't know if there was a definition under that, because if you said, it says a short period while receiving physical, social, or psychological therapy. So it already says it once in there.
Yeah, I, I would agree. It's almost like the, what, where the mental health should go up in there. It's just counseling. It's not, we don't even need to assist them. It's.
Yeah, we don't even need that part.
Yeah, so receiving physical, mental health, social, or I could, psychological is really now covered by ment- uh, mental health.
Yeah, we don't even want that part.
So maybe receiving physical, mental health.
This is already said in the first part.
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Question for the social, which I, I don't exactly understand what it is, but I'm hearing it's like family, or should we say, is it family or?
Maybe like people coming out of prison too, learning how to live socially without.
Oh, that's interesting.
Like turning, turning point is a transitional home, transitional housing.
Yeah.
And the only other comment I'll make is, I mean, are, why are we creating all these definitions from scratch? Do these, especially, I, I, like you said, are transitional houses, aren't they, they're based in statute for some of this stuff?
Well, that's why she's referring to that statute.
All right.
I don't know, it's just on our to-do list for this streamlining the permitting process, beefing up our definitions. I wouldn't do it if we didn't have to do it.
I'll do some more research on this one and see if there's. This was your existing definitions. I'll check and see if there's something in the statute.
Thank you.
So I was jumping to section two twenty-one point five. Limited in the, there's a list of things that you're limited in how you can regulate them. You can regulate them with respect to location, size, height, building bulk, yards, court backs, density of buildings, off-street parking, loading facilities, traffic noise, lighting, landscaping, and screening requirements. So that and only that. And then it lists all the things that can only be regulated according to those parameters. And they had, the state has added emergency shelters in Act forty-seven. Elsewhere in this document, you require conditional use for these things. And I.
Those are all the conditions listed, right? That we're gonna look, take them, well, we're not gonna take a look at, but Rose is gonna take a look at, and maybe the DRB in that case.
Yeah, I think that's overstepping what the state allows. Because.
Well, then, why don't we say in those areas for these things that subject to section two-two one point five, blah, blah, blah.
Right. That's what I was going to suggest, that you move them out of conditional use and maybe put them in permitted use with an asterisk referencing into twenty-one point five, and then. And then, um, look at the other section, which have noted right here, where they are listed as a conditional use. So just make those changes. Would be my suggestion.
Changes?
We have to make.
Yeah, we have to make them. Go ahead.
There's no discussion about this.
Great.
And while we're here, I wanted to take a look at two fifty-five, which is the administrative. They, Jason initially drafted this, administrative review section. I made a few minor tweaks to it. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to look at that, but up under applicability, it said, in order to streamline the permitting process, the zoning administrator is authorized to review and approve new development and amendments. And then it initially jumped to as specified in section four thirty, located within the Village RC District. So I changed that to read, in order to streamline the permitting process, the ZA is authorized to review and prove new developments and amendments to previously approved developments located within the Village RC District as specified in section four thirty.
Okay, that sounds good.
It wasn't clear what amendments, you know, were being referred to, and then.
Right, so we made it clear, or you made it clear.
Yeah. And then, under review criteria, all developments which the zoning administrator is authorized to review under this section must meet the site plan review standards in section two sixty point two. Before, it just said all developments must meet the site plan review standards, which I don't think you want, because then anyone doing anything would have to meet site plan review.
Right, so you specify.
Yeah.
In this case, she is authorized to review.
Right. So if you're okay with that, that's all I wanted to mention.
Yep.
That's it?
There are some S one hundred switch.
Now we're talking about S one hundred? Okay, so state housing bill S one hundred, we asked Martha last time to go ahead and just bake all the changes we had to make in the Village RC that were, that are out of our control anyway. When we met with Allison, Martha, and Rose and I met, she told us that there is one thing we have to decide about in the preservation district. Currently it says only twelve percent of your entire lot can have a building on it, can be developed. And she wants us to take a look at setbacks also in that area in the preservation district, because it seems kind of ridiculous that you can only develop twelve percent of your property. We thought that's, you know, at our meeting when we met, we thought that was pretty small amount.
Yeah, absolutely. That's almost punitive.
Especially if you.
Before I go to the S one hundred, then let me just go to that section. Okay, so here's the preservation district. Lot coverage, you've got twelve percent. Since lots were reduced to eight thousand seven hundred and twelve is now the required minimum lot area. I mean, you could go smaller if you wanted to. You can't go larger with the minimum lot size. And twelve percent of them, I mean, that's, that's nothing.
So we have to decide on if we want to change the percentage, and if we want to change the setbacks, and the other physical aspects of what you can develop, like the sides and the back and the front. And I know Rose has a plan, and I love her plan, of having trees planted in the preservation district, so the setback from the road, I think should be big enough for that to happen if we agree.
Yeah, we setback from the road to allow for greenscapes. Should it just be comparable to other districts?
Well, I don't think so. I think it should be, you know, roomy enough to person, good sized trees, so it's tree-lined.
Sure. Oh, and again, so streetscapes, greenscapes, sure, but as far as the actual building envelope, the rear lot line and the side lot line, setbacks.
Right, I'm just saying that maybe we don't want to change the setback to the road, but maybe other setbacks we could change.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's exactly what I'm saying. So, but it's to make it comparable to other districts. Right?
Well, I don't know how to go that far, but.
Why not?
But I think, what do you guys think would be a percentage? We kind of threw out, I think we threw out fifty percent at our meeting?
I just did, if, if the lot square footage is eighty-seven twelve, but it's twelve percent, then the square footage could only be one thousand forty-five feet.
Right, square feet.
Square feet, which.
My house is bigger than that and it's tiny. So what, what percentage do we want to think about here?
Well, I was gonna make a suggestion. What if you let that, that the footprint of it was that, but then they could have a second floor, so it'd double, right? Hmm. That makes sense, or am I?
I, I think that's really limiting.
Rose, what do you, what do you think? Because I know we've talked about the preservation district a lot. What do you think would be a reasonable percentage of allowable buildings in a lot?
I'm not really sure, but I was thinking that with the setbacks and stuff, maybe it would be, it would be smart of us to go down and measure a little bit and see what the average, you know, come up with an average and see what it is right now. And at least give us the opportunity to kind of keep it with what it is right now. And, you know, if it's twenty feet, thirty feet, or something like that, then we can at least keep it around that, you know, like an average. And, and then kind of maybe look at some of the square footages of the buildings down there now, and, you know, because they're all different, some are larger than others, and you know, kind of come up with an average of that also. Because if we're changing it, then this gives us an opportunity to kind of, you know, come up with an, with a number, you know, I mean, one, one thousand, I don't know what, what, I'm sorry, I forgot what Judy said, like twelve fifty or something for one, one floor. I mean, that's, that can be pretty limiting, but you might want to, you know, consider that. I, I'm not sure. Some, some of the lots are bigger than others also, but it depends on which, which area you're looking at, if it's below, below Commonwealth Avenue or above Commonwealth Avenue.
I'm not sure that a.
Father, they're already, don't have much setback from the road or the sidewalk, but they were the ones that already.
I'm not sure that putting an absolute number makes sense with lots of different sizes. And if we just go in and do an average of what exists, we are in effect saying, you may not change what exists while still preserving what we want in the preservation district. So we're putting a chilling effect on, on productive change that still complies with the, the beauty and the feel of that district. So where I think a percentage of lot is a lot more flexible and gets to what we need. What do others think?
Well, I'd agree with a percentage of lot, but not to change a setback from the side, from the road as it currently is.
What is it now? What's the road setback in the preservation district? Thirty feet from the center? Rose?
Yes, yeah.
From the center of the road?
No, from the, no, it's from the side. It's from the sidewalk.
Okay.
And what is it elsewhere?
I mean, it's pretty limiting.
Yeah, that's.
And, and what is it in general elsewhere?
Fifty-five, center of the road.
No, in the village, it's like, it's ten.
Okay.
So my old house was like five.
Yeah. I think, I think we can still fit greenscapes and keep a really good aesthetic, but without sacrificing density and the ability for property owners to, to build on their property. So I think three times the, the village setback is a little, is a little aggressive, and I think we can accomplish what we want by lessening that.
What do you think, to twenty?
Fifteen.
We can get a good sized tree in fifteen. We're throwing out some numbers here.
That's a third left.
Ryan says fifteen, I'm saying twenty.
You got sidewalks, you have a six, six-foot ADA sidewalk. How big are trees? You're, I mean, you know, this is getting into fifteen feet.
Engineering stuff.
Yep, nine feet for trees.
Nine feet for trees? You know that, or you're just throwing that off?
So I'm saying six feet for ADA sidewalk and nine feet for trees. It's fifteen foot setback from the.
Didn't I hear Rose say it's to the sidewalk, not to the road? Edge of the sidewalk. Edge of the sidewalk, Rose, you said thirty feet to the edge of the sidewalk, right?
That's right.
And I'm sorry, to the to the inside edge of.
From the edge of the sidewalk.
The inside edge.
So, okay, I think fifteen feet does it.
Ted, you're the tiebreaker. We're twenty, they're fifteen.
Seventeen and a half.
Exactly.
I don't think we, I don't think we need to decide tonight.
I think we need to do what Rose talked about.
I do too.
Yeah.
Some information.
Who's gonna actually, who's gonna actually do it? I mean, I'll go and do the measuring if nobody's gonna arrest me for walking.
No, we'll have to, I mean, I can go out and do that.
Okay.
The other thing I just think we should consider too are that there are people that we could hire, engineers, planners. I literally do this for a living and if we really want, if we're really serious about engineering the preservation district to what we want, then we need to put serious effort into a design. And instead of us just floundering forever about footage and percentages, let's get something real tangible that we can look at and say, okay, maybe not this, make a tweak. So that's going to cost money and time, but if we're serious about the preservation district and, you know, it's the gateway to town, then I think we need to put some serious resources behind it and actually engineer a plan instead of us just.
I think that's a good idea, I just don't know how tangible it is that.
Everything's tangible.
And a grant's out there?
Well, that's what I wanted to apply for a grant with regional planning for, you know, one of our municipal planning grants so that we could hire for that and also hire for the landscaping.
Yeah.
And Jason said that is possible.
Okay, so we decided we're not going to make that decision tonight and we're going to try to get grants to get it done, all right, right?
Right, yeah.
So in the meantime, I would stay the way it is. Are we fine with that?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it's legal.
Okay, Martha, was that the only decision we had to make about S one hundred that we are allowed to make?
No, right now, if you take your lot front minimum of seventy feet, your lot depth minimum of one twenty five, and you multiply those, you get a lot of eighty seven fifty. And since you can't require a minimum that's bigger than eighty seven twelve, you got to tweak at least one of those numbers.
And you're still talking about the preservation district?
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to come up from eighty seven twelve to eighty seven fifty?
You got to come down from eighty seven fifty to eighty seven twelve. So maybe you want a frontage of sixty eight or a lot depth of, you know, one twenty two or something that will bring it down so that you're not.
Are you saying you have to do this down by a certain date to follow your state regs?
Yeah. I mean, right now.
This is the only choice we have. What's our choice of the matter? Matter, just so we said it has to be eighty seven fifty?
So. Is eight thousand seven hundred and twelve feet. But if you're requiring seventy feet of frontage and a hundred and twenty five foot depth, that is bigger than the minimum lot size. So you'd be running a pile of Act forty seven. So you just need to tweak that a tiny bit, one of these numbers, frontage or lot depth.
So it looks like it's thirty eight feet. We have to reduce that lot size by, is that correct?
No.
No, you said eighty seven fifty and it's neat, it can only be eighty seven twelve.
If I had to eighty seven twelve, which is what it has to be, by one twenty five, then I get sixty nine point sixty nine. If you want to keep the depth, you can reduce the frontage to sixty nine. If you want to keep the frontage, you can reduce the depth to one twenty four.
So it sounds like this is a decision we have to make. I say reduce the depth and not the front. Got a big bank here, just gonna prevent you from doing much anyway. And a lot of it.
Is that all right? One twenty four.
Are we agreeing to reduce the depth and not the frontage?
Do you think that makes sense, Rose?
Rose, what do you think?
I don't know. I I mean, if anything, I would reduce the depths, yeah, not the front.
It sounds like we don't have a choice, so it's either lose the frontage or the depth.
Yep, I go with depth.
Okay, we're gonna go with that, Martha. Andy, are you okay with that? Maybe Andy nodded off.
Sorry, yes, no, I'm with you.
Okay.
She's got the finding the mute button.
Is that how we had to get done on S one hundred?
Are you, what about this twelve percent? And the other issue is, you know, there's different terms, there's coverage, there's building coverage and there's lot coverage. And the one you use the most is lot coverage. And your definition is just coverage and then you have a section that's building coverage. So you should also be consistent with that, decide what you want to go with. I mean, lot coverage, I, let me see if I can find it. I did a little um, something the other day. Just switch what I'm sharing. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
So a suggested definition for lot coverage, the the portion percentage of a lot area, which is covered by buildings, roofs, structures, sidewalks, paved parking and loading areas, driveways, access roads, tennis courts and other impermeable surfaces which prevent the infiltration of stormwater. Areas covered by decks, boardwalks or permeable pavement may be counted at fifty percent. Lawn and garden areas are specifically excluded from this definition. Right now, you just say coverage, that percentage of the lot area covered by the footprint of the building area. But then you you use the term lot coverage in the dimensional standards. And, you know, if you are going to use the word, the term lot coverage and, you know, you're not just talking about buildings, then you do need to be more generous with your percentage because it's got to cover the driveway and, you know, anything else that's impermeable. Twelve percent in the historic preservation district would, you know, basically cover a driveway and nothing else.
Do we have to make a decision on this tonight? I feel like I need to know more about it and think more about it before.
We also need these documents in our packet. I I need this should, this can't be the first time I'm seeing this.
Yeah, that was the first time I'm seeing it too.
Yep.
Can we table, do it next month?
Yeah, we're gonna table it.
I'd like to learn a little bit. Think it's an important decision then.
And it is past seven thirty, it's seven thirty nine. I really would like to talk about short term rentals. Are we gonna?
I'm fine to keep going.
Are we okay to go to eight?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
How about Andy, are you okay to go to eight and Martha and Allison?
All good.
Martha and Allison, you don't have to stay. We're gonna talk about short term rentals if you don't want to.
Martha, thank you. You're the. Your recommendations have been wonderful.
Can you send us all the stuff you just showed us that we didn't have so that we can take a look at it?
Yes, yep, I'll do that.
Okay, so short term rentals. I sent everybody a chart that of what currently is going on with the current, went online to see who has regulations so far. There's a lot of them pending in a lot of places. But I started to put those in here and then I thought, hmm, I'm not going to do all this pending because who knows what they're going to end up with in the end. So in my chart, I have Plymouth, Chester's. Wait, let me, permission to share my chart, Rebecca? Do I have it? Becca? See if I can figure this out. Okay, which one is it? God, they give you a bad picture of it. Sure, there it is. Okay, here it is. Last one. Here it is. You guys can see it. I might have done something really dumb and disconnected my zoom. That's okay, we can all see it. Eric, do you? Did you look at it at all? I have an extra copy of my chart. You got it? Okay, so I guess we can just all look at it because I don't know if you guys at home have it or not. So I got Plymouth, Chester, Killington, Woodstock and Wind Hall and then Ludo. Optimistically, can we fill in any of these blanks? So Plymouth requires permit, registration required, yes with Plymouth and they inspect, someone from the town actually inspects. Chester, yes. Killington, yes, if it's greater than fourteen days a year. Woodstock does it completely differently. They have a conditional use approval required, so it goes through Rose's office. Rose, I don't know if you want to handle nine hundred different short term rentals in your office. Wind Hall, yes, but it's considered an accessory use or permitted existing dwelling, so that would also go through their zoning administrator. So what are people's feelings? Do we want to require permit and registration for our short term rentals?
What happened before with the with what was going on before? And Brian was on that board, weren't you, Brian? What happened with all that?
Brian, you want to have data as to what went on with that?
Sure, so that board basically came to the conclusion that we needed to mine data to actually come up with a coherent plan. We have that data. I believe Justin, who was also just hijack, who was also on the board, is kind of in control of that data at this point and along with Brandon McNamara, I haven't seen it.
Oh, I have it. I can send it to everybody.
Do you have it?
The Granicus.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's over eight hundred.
Yeah, so I haven't seen that. You know, basically that commission came to, yes, we need, we need a registry. That's where we stopped, you know, it was a basis in health, health and fire safety. That was really what we were pushing, which I'll take that opportunity to say, I don't know why we're still calling it short term rental registry. It should be a rental registry. I don't see how we can pick and choose where you want to enforce health and safety standards.
No, I really don't want to do that because our survey was very clear that people don't want to regulate long term. They're really hard to find in our town. And there's no way we want to make it harder for them to find.
We don't want them to be safe, though?
We do want them to be safe and I think through their insurance and stuff that can be required. But I don't want them to be regulated because I, my daughter, you know, trying to find a place was crazy and I don't want that to be more restrictive and that's what our survey said. The people in the village don't want it to be restrictive.
So and again, restrictive in what way? So health and fire safety. So we're not talking about restrictions, we're not talking about any.
We're talking about not having them to have to pay fees.
I'm not talking about fees.
For doing something that is really needed in our town.
Yep, I'm not talking necessarily talking about fees either. If you rent for twelve, if you have twelve month leases, you should, you don't have to pay the fee, but you still have to register and you still have to know that it's a safe place to live.
I think that less stuff costs money for those people. I don't want them to have to do that. I think we should stick to rentals.
No, but I I agree with Ryan. I mean, we don't, you know, health and safety doesn't end at the door of short term versus long term. But I agree with not not charging a fee. And I think we can have different, I I think that if we're genuinely concerned about health and safety, it should apply to all. And we can change whether it's a fee or a permit versus registration. If the fire department does not know you're renting a space for twelve months, then that fire department will not be concerned when there's a fire. And that's exactly what Chief Pete said at at the select board meeting.
Yep.
He did say that, but can we, Ryan? I'm sorry, Ryan, what happened in the end with the short term rentals? Didn't we contract somebody or didn't we have somebody on helping you guys out?
Yep, so we contracted with Granicus. They mined the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three winter season. All the data of all the listings from all the listing platforms. And that data is now just sitting and we haven't moved forwards from there.
Which is what we're doing right now, I hope.
So, you know, so as far as Granicus, they're basically à la carte. So if we were to contract further with them, they would enforce what we would choose to enforce there. You know, we would have total control over over any any fines, any registration fees, everything. We can choose whether or not we want them to facilitate all of those or if we want to do it in house, so.
And there's also other options. Rose sent me two other options that she got emails about and Plymouth uses Patriot. So there's more than one company that does that work.
So I I think we're we're getting into administrative details versus the bigger picture at the moment. I mean, I I think that we really, first of all, need the data. The data exists, the town paid for it. I don't see how we can make any decisions on this for short term rentals, certainly, without the data.
Well, the data says there's over eight hundred of them. And if we don't make decisions soon, the state's gonna make them for us. They're gonna get all the money. We're gonna get zip. And we could use the money for housing. That's what most of the people wanted it used for, right? Housing and parking. So I say, I say we move on it and don't, you know, come up with ways to delay it.
I'm absolutely saying move on it.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is yes, but we want long term also included, but not for a fee. We're having to go down to the fee part. Is that what I hear everybody saying? So we can fill in for Ludo, yes?
For long term, they just register, so.
So that that health and safety is with that. But that's, you know, one person from the state does that and they don't really get around everybody very often. Plymouth requires it, that they have to prove that they've had a health inspection. One of them required, I'm not sure if it's from all. Okay, so I hear everybody saying for the first category, category, yes, but maybe both kinds, but with long term.
Yep, so.
Only look at health and safety. Okay. How many days? Plymouth regulates them if they're less than fifteen. I mean, yeah, less than fifteen. Chester, if they're less than thirty or less than fourteen times a year. Killington, if they're less than thirty. Woodstock, if they're less than thirty, but they can only rent six times a year. And also Woodstock had this kind of unusual condition that there's no no regulations during foliage season. You don't even have to get a permit. You can rent the whole foliage season. Then then they define foliage season, tell you exactly what that is. But their fees are pretty high. So what do we think? What's gonna, are we gonna go less than fifteen, less than thirty?
Well, state fire code says if you rent for one day, you're considered a public building.
Okay. So we're saying one to fifteen?
Just saying what fire, just saying what fire code states.
Right. I I have a question. When we say if they rent less than fifteen, that just means that they have to be registered if they have are less than fifteen.
Right.
And yeah, Ryan's saying if you rent at all, you should be registered.
Correct.
If you rent one room, one day, the whole year, you should be registered.
Yeah, that's according to state state fire code.
Okay, so we're saying less than two.
Well.
Or you should say anyone who rents.
Exactly. It's any rental, anyone that is using their property.
Oh, okay.
To rent two tenants.
All right, so that's the whole long term thing too. Okay, so.
Agreed.
Ludo, how many days? Lot applicable is anyone who rents.
But then the other part of this, we do see one where they limit the amount of rentals a year, is that.
Yeah, I wonder.
Consider any kind of limitation?
And I'm and I'm against that. And I'm, and I'm against that, so
Yeah, I don't think we should do that.
That's restrictions.
I'm just asking this question.
Yep.
And I'm also wondering if that's even legal? Woodstock hasn't been challenged, I don't think, but. Okay, so anyone who rents, and are we agreeing we're not limiting the times they rent?
Agreed.
Operator availability. Plymouth was very adamant that they had to be available at all times by phone and email, both. Chester says you have to have an agent that lives in the Windsor, Wyndham County districts. Killington says by phone at all times. Woodstock says they have to have the manager's name, address, and phone required. That was required by the town not to have in the actual building. And Wind Hall says a contact person is required. What do we think?
I think it should be phone and email by the owner or a designated professional.
Me, too. That sounds good. What do you guys think of that? Phone and email?
By owner or a designated professional.
Designated professional.
So I guess the one thing I'd like to specify is no matter what, we need the owner's information, and then they can also submit a property manager's information if that's who's handling the property.
Agree 100%.
Wait, say that again?
So no matter, no matter what, regardless, we need the owner of the property's contact information, but then they can
I think the address is
Okay, so does the town need it? Does, or does it need to be posted in the building? People were specific about that. Should it be in the building, and the town also has it?
I, I don't think it needs to be posted in the building who the owner is, if they have a proper manager, but the town needs to know, absolutely.
Okay, so the town needs to know the owner, and the rentees need to know the designated person.
And I think it
Owner or, yes.
I think it needs to be phone, email, and address of the owner.
Probably the town, yeah, for sure. The town should be, Joseph, you have an LLC.
Yeah.
Because that's the problem they had over there. They couldn't get ahold of anybody, you know, when they were trying to rent the people over there on, Deirdre Rosen, or, I'm sorry, a question. Scott?
You know, you go, you go slap rental agents.
Rental, oh, yeah, it's true. It's good to have you here, because I know you are involved in all this.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I couldn't hear it.
Designated professional, and also include rental agency. Okay, occupancy. A lot of these are the same. Six per three-bedroom home, eight people have special requirements. That's Plymouth. Chester, two per bedroom plus two, maximum of eight. Three bedrooms times two plus two, less than
Have to go by the size of the municipal sewer or septic.
Yeah, a lot of them said that. Shall not exceed water waste requirements, but that's if you're in the village, basically. Well, no, it would be your septic system, too.
Yep.
And Chester, or Killington, has two per bedroom and two more allowed. That seems to be kind of a common formula. Woodstock has, they have to comply with the Woodstock zoning laws because they go through conditional use. Wind Hall has, they shall not exceed water, wastewater requirements.
I think it's two-bedroom and two more allowed, plus shall not exceed wastewater requirements.
Eight? They didn't say you couldn't exceed eight. They said if you had more than eight, you had the, there was a whole list of stuff.
There's more requirements when you have eight people in a rental by the state, like egress and things like that.
Oh, yeah, there's many legal documents that need to be made.
It's, it's 15. Once you hit 15, you have to be sprinkler.
I thought it was eight, that's what I
Once you're, once you hit 15, you have to, they're likely going to make you sprinkle the building.
So do we just want to put down what the regulations are?
Let's check that, because I think there's something with eight.
Okay, so we'll check on that.
Yep, so typically, it's two, two occupants per bedroom plus two, and then once you hit
That seems to be the big general formula.
Yep.
Two per bedroom plus two.
Yep.
But then they all max out. And the ones that are over eight have, like, a whole laundry list of stuff they have to comply with.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Is that what we want?
Yes.
So, and again, that's
So that looks like Chester's
That's already fire code. So again, the, the
Both states.
Yeah, well, that's what they, most of them just say that, have to meet fire, safety fire codes from the state. So are we looking at Chester's, basically? Right? We're all going to Chester's?
Yes.
Yearly cost, here's a fun one. Plymouth, they charge $200 for one bedroom, $100 for each additional bedroom, and a $40 recording fee. Chester, owner occupied is only $150 a year. Non-owner occupied is $300 a year, and they renew on April 30th every year. Killington renews November 15th, maybe that's when they came up with their rules. One-to-two bedroom is 400, three-bedroom, 450. Four-bedroom, oh, wait, I think I cut that off or something.
So 500.
Oh, it's 500, yeah. So Killington are the most expensive.
I think this is where the data is very important. When I attended select board meetings and they were talking about this, we heard that we're like the highest in the nation of, we're higher than the national average for
Yeah, it's about 800.
Yeah, so I, I think that making this decision without having the data, I don't think makes sense.
Well, this is going to be the data delay one.
Table for data.
Table for data.
Absolutely.
I'm just going to shoot Justin an email and say, can I share that with you guys? And I'll send it right to you.
We, we could just, at this moment, speak about whether we want to have a tiered, like, per-bedroom fee schedule, or just a set per, per season, if we, or if we, do we want to have a differential between owner occupied, homesteaded property versus non-homesteaded property? Then the amounts associated, we can talk about with the data.
Yeah, so those are the questions we're going to ask first. Data.
Well, I was saying I was just saying we could address those now, the structure, if we wanted to.
What do you think about, Andy, can we address the tier-per-bedroom thing?
Yeah.
What are, what are we thinking?
I can't go to the amount, but I agree with the concept, if that's what's being asked.
Yeah, so we, we do, so do a set, set price per bedroom, and then have a subsidy or an exemption for owner occupied? Is that, is that something we want to encourage homesteaders, so people that live here year round?
I like that idea of owner occupied and stuff.
I don't know if it's an
All the noise and everything, all the other things that are going on.
Yeah, I'm not sure about an exemption, but I agree with tiered pricing, different pricing for owner occupied versus non-owner occupied.
We all agree with that? Okay, so we've made some decisions about that, even though we're tailoring for data. Okay, and I also didn't put that in here, but Wind, Wind Hall and Woodstock, obviously, they go through the, they go through the town, so they have their own cost. Woodstock's costs are quite pricey. I put those at the end if you want to see those.
And I do believe there should be an annual, you know, like the recording fee.
An annual
Yes.
Yeah, whether it's recording or permit fee, that's, you know, applies to everybody, even if it's diminutive.
I agree. Do we all agree?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next thing is the knockbox thing. I know that's a huge thing in Plymouth, that they want to require this knockbox, but they seem to be, Plymouth and Killington seem to be the only ones that require that. I wonder if it has to do with the company you use? Because since I did this, I found out Plymouth uses the one that start, that you sent me, Rose, it starts with GOV, I think.
And I'm sorry, Terry, can you explain what the issue is? I mean, I know what a knockbox is.
I think they just want some sort of universal way for the owner's, not the owner, but for the, the renter to be able to find the key securely and all that stuff.
Well, and it's also used for fire.
Eric, do you have a comment about knockboxes?
A knockbox is only available to the fire department. They're the only ones that have the key to that.
Oh, so the fire department can get in.
Typically, those on commercial buildings.
Schools.
Schools, exactly, municipal buildings. You have, it's Knox with an X, knockbox, so only the fire, but it's like a, like the postal, only the postal office has the key to the mailbox.
Okay, so now I see why some people are requiring them, so if nobody's there, somebody can get in, and the fireman can get in and put out a fire.
The concern I have with, with doing that on a rental property is, you know, you're requiring that on all commercial properties. But, why, what's the concern with having the knockbox on only short-term rentals? I think that's the debate in Plymouth.
Does anybody have a strong opinion about having, making sure they have a knockbox?
I, I think, I mean, the only time I've ever dealt with them is with schools, and that's because, you know, they want to be able to access the school because it's a large building. I think maybe that's something that we ask the fire department if they have strong feelings.
Will you ask them?
Me, too.
Yeah, thanks. Pretty well asked. Okay, next, zoning areas. Most people said all, all of their zoning areas, but Woods, is it Woodstock, I think? No, Killington said all, if it's
Can you, can someone, you know, go to the next page? I'm ending knockbox. Thanks.
I'm glad people are, like, being able to zoom into it. Okay, so we
Thanks.
So I don't understand what that means.
It means where is it allowed? Is it going to allow, we can allow it in Village RC, Village R, Village R2, Preservation Districts?
I think if you allow it, you have to allow it everywhere.
Yeah.
But I don't think you can
Do we have any, do we want to have a specific number, though? See, like, Killington says that they're allowed everywhere if it's less than 16 people. If it's more than 16 people, then they, you know, put some conditions around it.
I think the occupancy has already been decided by the size of the home and the bedrooms that were allowed in the home.
Right.
Maybe that's why people just allow them all. So we're saying all?
I would say all, yes.
I agree.
Rose, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Parking requirements.
It already is.
Yeah, they're already everywhere, obviously. Parking requirements, Plymouth, number of cars equals number of bedrooms. Killington, onsite only. Woodstock, onsite only. And Wind Hall, that's some specific stuff.
So I'm sorry, I don't understand, I don't understand what onsite only means. So it's not a number, it's saying you have to have some
Basically, you can't fill up their municipal parking lots, or the street, park on the street, you know, it has to be, they have to have the parking that they meet for the number of people that are staying there. That's basically what they're saying. Though I don't know with the new state regs on parking, if we can even say that.
I was going to say, I think that overlaps with other, like you said, that's 100.
But maybe saying onsite only is good for, like, rural areas, so they're not parking in the street, blocking other people's driveways, you know, stuff like that.
Well, it's the same with the village, they have, you can't park on the street.
Yeah, that's true. Do we want to say onsite only?
Well, I would, I would just say if we make a decision, let's make a decision that could actually be policed. I don't see how, you know what I mean? Be really difficult to say.
I'm just saying that in the contract they're signing, if it's onsite only, maybe it'll deter people from parking on the street that it says that.
I seem to recall when we had people at our meetings, like last fall, them talking about people were parking on the street that weren't, but a lot of people would go to the municipal lot because of their overflow parking zone. I don't really know how I feel about that. I guess I have to give that some thought.
Okay, so we'll table that.
No, but question, what about just onsite, onsite or municipal lot only? So it's not the street. We're not saying how many, saying it's got to be on
All of that.
You're not supposed to park overnight in the municipal parking lot?
You're not?
No.
Then it's onsite only.
Okay, are we okay with that, onsite only?
Yeah, it's a choice.
Look at all the decisions we're making. Insurance requirements. Plymouth, yes. Chester, yes, $1 million. And all the others don't have an insurance requirement.
Absolutely need an insurance requirement. This is about health and safety. Absolutely. There's language that would say customary and traditional for, you know, a rental.
Do we say a million bucks a rental, like, like Chester does, or just yes?
I'm sorry.
I don't know what a million bucks per rental actually means, honestly. It's, you have renters insurance. I think we could
Liability on your property.
Oh, no, no, I, no, I understand, but per-rental, I think, is a misnomer. I think that
Like per house?
They said per-rental, whatever that means in their contract.
Right, but I, so, I mean, I think, yeah, I think we, we should have, I mean, I think the customary is if you're in a rental situation, it's at least a million dollars. You should have rental insurance for a million dollars.
Am I making comments about that? I'm sorry, Andy, go ahead.
No, that's it.
Okay.
Insurance has absolutely zero to do with health and safety. Yes, there's no requirement to have insurance unless you have a mortgage. So unless you're going to mandate every homeowner has homeowner insurance, you have no basis to require anyone carry insurance.
Wow, I didn't know that.
I actually respectfully disagree. So I can't say what's legal or not, but, but the difference between a homeowner is we are talking about opening your home as a commercial business to others. Insurance means that if something happens to the health and safety of them, that they will have some insurance to go to to pay for their medical bills. Absolutely, so rental insurance is very, very standard.
Disagree respectfully, Andy. Insurance is for the owner of the property to protect them from, like, not for the renter. The renter can sue the owner, whether he has insurance or not, doesn't matter.
But he might be able to give
There's a possibility of a recovery if they have rental insurance. If they don't, then it's probably impossible, and, and if we're going to be about
What do you guys
We don't require, you don't mandate insurance for any business endowed or any residential property. That's not something that the municipality does.
But maybe we want that.
And what is, what are the insurance requirements for a hotel or motel?
A whole lot, according to Justin.
I, I don't see how this is different.
Yeah, and that's part of the reason it's unfair, the whole thing. They don't have any of the same fees.
And again, and I, I do agree with Eric, if we're not requiring it for other public spaces, and also get back to actually, again, policing it. How are we actually going to physically find out or know
Well, it depends on
What coverage
It depends on if we do it internally, or if we hire a company to do it. That's how we'll be
Either way, if you, if you need to
First off, there is no way internally that any, that any, anyone in this building will be able to take on as many rentals as there is, and, yeah, yeah, so they're going to have to hire a company to do it, and they already started to do that, so, and there's two more companies that contacted me last week, last Friday or Thursday, that I pushed on to Terry, you know, for the short-term rental, you know, information. So, yes, there's no way internally that this is going to be able to be done.
Okay, so insurance, I hear Ryan saying yes, Andy's, I mean, Ryan's saying no, Andy's saying yes, I'm saying yes.
One more question.
Wait a second, what do you think, Ted?
You say?
He says no.
No.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying, I don't see
I'd say no, because I don't underst, I don't think the whole thing's on the table.
Do you, or the tiebreaker?
I think we need to, yeah, but I'm not going to vote a tiebreaker if I don't feel that we have the information.
Oh, no, you wouldn't get a tiebreaker vote.
Yeah.
I, I'm with Ted, I mean, I'm happy to get more information. I, I think that this is, this is where
Standing at all levels of the playing field for other people that are trying to rent, like inns and motels and hotels, because they are required to have insurance. I think at levels of
I'd like to say, I think insurance is important, and, and I do think it protects the renter.
Me, too.
Because it's the liability piece that I'm thinking, you know, if somebody Because it's the liability piece that I'm thinking, you know, if somebody...
But even that liability protects the owner of the property from that liability, so.
But it also protects the other person where they, as Andy said, it's recovered. However, I don't have enough information about it, and I would like a little more time and information.
Okay, so that's a tabled item. So who's gonna get more information about it? That's my question. I'm delegating authority here.
Sure.
Don't look at me, I got enough.
Andy, you got a lot on your plate. Can you get information about why insurance requirement is a yea or nay?
I already have a job, Andy.
I know you already have. I have a granddaughter job.
I'll look into it.
I almost canceled tonight, but yes, I will look into insurance.
Okay, we got Andy and we got Ryan looking into it.
One more question for you.
Yes, Eric?
Is there any require, if it's for the benefit of a renter, is there a requirement, or are you mandating a requirement that long-term rentals have insurance?
I absolutely believe that that should be the case.
A renter is a renter.
Yeah, I agree. This is very, very important.
It was so needed.
Can I just say something? Don't most people have insurance?
Eric's saying nobody has to unless they have a mortgage.
Which is, which is true.
And I guess they're just fools.
Yeah.
My argument is, it's smart or not, my argument is that they're not required to carry it.
Right.
I carry a ton of insurance because I don't want the liability, but I'm not required to.
Right, understood. So anyone who is renting within our town or village limits, I believe we should be mandating that they have rental insurance. There needs to be a pot of money, someone bigger than the renter, the landlord themselves, that if something unfortunately occurs, that there can be some pot of money to go to. Absolutely for long-term rentals. You should not be renting without it. It is not fair to the rentee, to the tenet.
Okay, so...
I just agree if the municipality has...
I see a 3S on our board here. I don't know if we need to disable it. Our duty's on the fence.
I would like more.
Okay, so we got Ryan and Andy getting us more information. Okay, fire, state fire inspection required. Yes, all across the board?
Yes.
Or yes, only if greater than eight people, comply with Vermont Rental Housing Health Code, comply with state health, fire, tax, and environmental rights, which I think is a nice, nice someone that Windhull has. What are we saying there? I know we're saying yes, but do we want to do more than fire inspection? Do we want to say they also have to comply with state health, tax, and environmental rights? Or Vermont Rental Housing Codes?
Well, I think that's a good idea, but I wonder, again, the enforcement, how do we...
Well, we don't do the enforcing at all.
I would like to, yeah, I'd like to encourage us not to consider the enforcement capabilities. Because we're a small town with a small staff, and we don't, I think that that, if we went by that, we should just ditch all our zoning laws. No offense to you, Rosemary. I just think that if we have to do what's right and then worry about how we enforce it afterwards.
Right. So what are we saying yes to or no to? The fire part or the fire...
I think, sorry.
Environmental part.
So just, I want to be specific here to know what we're saying yes to. There's an inspection required or that to first get this permit? Or there is a right to inspect possibly, and that would go to your enforcement concerns? So that you could get your permit without the inspection, but you are agreeing that there can be an inspection and your permit can be revoked?
Right, either one or the other.
I think practically speaking, it's the latter. That it's a right to inspect and you can lose it without it.
What does everyone else think?
State fire inspection required, yes. Health inspection, yes. Taxes, I mean, we're talking, I think they're talking about rooms and meals tax there. All third parties per state law required to take that out. Environmental regs, I would think they're talking about septic there.
Oh, yeah, you're right, water and sewer.
Water and sewer, so. But, and again, this is going back to very, the very first, where we're talking permit slash registration, or registry. We were really just talking about a registry, but a registry that now would need a permit for deterrence, so. As far, as far as health and fire safety, yes, taxes, I don't think that's really, I, I, I mean, people are always, there are always gonna be cash transactions. No, there's nothing you can do about that. Environmental regulations, I mean, I feel like that's covered under, under everything else, under occupancy. So fire and health.
Yes, yes on fire. Is there a... Oops.
Sorry. If we are requiring that they comply with state health, fire, tax, blah, 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 we're not the enforcement mechanism. We're just sort of putting it out there. By the way, you have this process.
They're just checking a box.
We're reporting.
Yeah, they're just checking a box to say that they do. So are we saying check a box, are we saying we actually want to see that fire, the Granicas or whatever wants to see the state fire inspection?
So the logistics of this would be, we get, we have a registry or a list, right? That list then gets passed on to the state fire marshal and health officer. That then gets put into a queue, they prioritize it however they could. If there, if a property's unable to be inspected because there's, the fire marshal just can't get there, are we gonna have like a self-certification potentially as well?
Are they just checking a box or are they actually getting an inspection? Someone's making him get an exception.
Yeah, but I, I mean, we, I don't think we have the jurisdiction to put onto the state fire department marshal inspections. I think that if they have to comply with this, and it's a checkoff box, if and when the state does inspect and it's, they don't pass, that's the removal of the permit.
Okay, so...
I don't, yeah, sorry.
They check a box that they're gonna get that done, and then if there's a problem, they're liable?
At their, and they, their permit is revocable, revocable.
Yeah, okay, we're good. So we're not saying it's required, but we're saying that that happens and they...
It's required that they have to comply with it. We're putting it as a representation that they're signing. This is, gotta be a form that they're signing, they're making a legal representation.
Legal representation. Okay, everybody agree?
Yes.
Noise party restrictions. We got public decency and volume and behavior from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM in Plymouth.
Jared, Jared had a comment.
What am I missing? Oh, Jared, go, sorry. I got tunnel vision here.
So coming from real estate, when I was doing seasonal rentals, everybody offering their home for a seasonal rental had to get a fire safety certificate. So I don't see how it's any different here. They should at least be able to send in the fire safety certificate to our department. We can write that number down like it's a wastewater permit on their registration, and then they're done.
Okay, fire safety certificate.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Are we all agreeing on that? That's required? Okay, noise party restrictions. So we have Plymouth, public decency and volume and behavior. I think that was the one you liked.
Yeah, I would like to see this all over the town. I don't understand why we don't have it, and I think it's unfair to put on them. I really want it for the whole town and village. I'm sorry?
And we have none in Chester, none in Killington. Woodstock, no parties or outside activity from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And Windhull, parking noise and traffic, preserve the character of the area. That was the one you mentioned last time, Andy.
Yeah, I mean, I would do 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM on weekdays and weekends, 11:00 PM to frankly, 8:00 AM on the weekends.
I like that. What do you guys think?
Can we, can we just say follows current town ordinances?
We don't have.
Well, as somebody who has an Airbnb close to my house, I would love if we had an ordinance that they have to shut after 10:00 or 11:00 tonight. Firewater, cheering.
It's good to get that perspective. Are we...
Again, we, we need this everywhere. I know that's not what we're discussing right now, but I think it's, it's fair to say to somebody else, you have to do it because the whole town has to do it and the village has to do it. We live in the village, there is no ordinance, it is a problem.
It is, and that's something that, you know, I don't know if it starts with us or the smoke board. Do you know, Scott, where that ordinance begins? Okay.
I can't hear that.
Of short-term rents, especially when we have a 100 of them, I think so. I'm sorry to say, but they have a little bit of a disregard. They just think they're here to party a lot of times, and they don't...
Agreed, but...
People around them that are not in party mode all the time.
What kind of language you guys like? Do you like Plymouth, public decency and volume and behavior? Or do you like no parties outside, no parties or outside activity in Woodstock? Or parking noise and trash, preserve the character of the area?
I like the public, public decency and volume and behavior.
What do you guys think? Is that a good one?
I like town and village ordinance, because again, I always, I always, I always really, I always really has, I'm always real hesitant when you're ostracizing a group. You're now treating properties differently than the rest.
We're starting, I have no problem with it either.
Public decent, volume and behavior.
Sure.
7:00, but...
Yeah, I'd like to see it all over town, but we want to start here with that.
So, but also, Ryan, we're not allowing hotels everywhere. So if we're allowing something that's like a hotel everywhere, they're already being treated differently. So I have no problem when they are private, acting as commercial in a residential district, having a separate rule, followed by, I would very much like to be on record that we need a town and village ordinance that is the same.
So just, just to paint a picture, and I know I'm really nitpicking here, you have a, you have an STR. They have to be quiet at 11:00. The neighbor's house is having a family reunion, and they can party all night?
I don't know what, oh, SCA short-term, no, that's my point. It is, let's not have it for short-term rentals just because we don't have it, which we should elsewhere. And I agree that the family reunion, no, they should not be going past 11:00 PM on a weekend. And not past 9:00 PM on a weekday unless it's a holiday.
Everywhere, but let's start here.
I agree.
Okay, moving, I can hear three of us agreeing.
Fireworks after 11:00.
Ted, do you want a word? Want to jump in here anywhere?
I'm good.
What, you're good? Okay. All right, so look at all we get, look at all this, woo-hoo!
Well, I would also, I would also just like to, I'd also just like to caution, yeah, great, we're chugging through it, but this is like rough, of a rough draft.
Of course it's a rough draft. We're gonna visit that shit many times, but at least we're making some decisions.
Yeah, to start, to start.
I guess that we end at 8:30 today, because we're like seven minutes and we still have another page.
Oh, you don't have another page? No, that's just, that's people's penalty fees. Yeah, this is the last item.
We just have fines.
Fines for violations and non-registrations. I mean, I don't know if these fines came from, well, obviously the Chester one, they made them up, but the Plymouth one, I wonder if that's a Patriot thing. So $100 a day for infractions and non-registration, like if they refuse to register, is Plymouth. Chester, 125 days for non-registration, your first offense, second offense, $250, third offense, $500 for violations against noise and party and stuff like that. You've got $150 for the first, $350 for the second, $600 for the third.
I would take Chester plus add the infractions from Plymouth. If you don't, people are making money hand over fist. If we don't make it something that starts accumulating, it's just a cost of doing business, and it will have no impact whatsoever.
That's, that's interesting, a cost of doing business. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I think it should be a pretty heavy deterrent.
I'm gonna go with Andy.
Andy, so we're taking Plymouth's top part and Chester's bottom part for violations.
Yep.
Okay.
Wow.
We did a lot. All right, so we have next month's agenda planning, September. I hear we have a few more things with Martha. I was hoping we'd get that done tonight. So a few more things with Martha, I hear is doing, we agree. Streamlining thing. We gotta take a look at the state housing bill one more time. Basically, it is the exact same agenda.
And Terry, you and I though have been...
Yeah, I know we need to add that. Andy and I want to add, I'm taking a look at the survey and making sure that is directing our, what we do.
Yeah, and it's, it's, but well, directing it, but that, like you said, that is every day. But I think it's that if we have a session where we're brainstorming about this is the raw data or the summary data, where can we make a difference so that we are proactively and not just reactively using the survey data?
Yeah, I like that a lot. I like that idea a lot. My computer just died, sorry. Oh, we don't have to show any more documents anyway. So everybody's agreed that's our next agenda?
Yes, I have a request or comment.
Yes.
Can we, when you're making the agenda, try to put some time on it? Because it seems like we are going over every meeting considerably quick.
Well, that streamlining part with Martha took 10 minutes, and here it took an hour and 10 minutes. That streamlining the permitting process, it only took 10 minutes with her. It was very few items, but then when we went to do it today, there was like 100 more items that we talked about.
I'm just saying, you know, or, or at some point, we decide whether we're going to do it or table it for the next meeting. It worked pretty regularly.
Well, I mean, potentially then, you know, amending the, the agendas to be manageable. I mean, if we're adding too many things to the agenda, you know, and we have to give things its due time. I know we've been saying, we've, we've been saying this for a long time, but I'm still pretty upset that there's a lot of documentation that I am not getting prior to coming here, and then basically being rushed to make a decision on it. So there's a lot of stuff from Martha that I'm seeing for the first time.
Well, me too. I saw it all this week because I saw it for the first time.
Sure. So I don't know how we fix that, but...
That's what makes it longer.
That's what's killing our time.
I'll take that to my next meeting for sure.
Yeah, and we can also be a lot more efficient, I think, with some other things as well.
Yeah, I, I would, I would prefer not to see an artificial time limit. I totally agree with how the agenda goes. Maybe after time limit it gets tabled, because I think that the conversations are superb that we're having. This is the healthy debate that the town needs from us and expects from us, I hope.
I just love that all you guys weigh in. I just love that part. I mean, a lot of boards in town, one person talks the whole time. I just love that you all weigh in. Ted, will you weigh in whenever we met you? You weighed in a lot. You weighed in a lot. No, I love, I love what you have to say.
I think this, like Ryan said, there's more information needed upfront. I mean, there needs to be some more thought process before we all get here. I'm uncomfortable making some of the decisions that, I understand we're trying to get, trying to get to the end tonight. And it's a start, so I look at the positive. There's no reason for me to say stuff that he's already said, you've already said, which I'm listening, and, and we're gonna move into the next stage, which is fine.
We are, yep. Okay, feedback noted for sure. Do we have any board member comments? Well, we just had board member comments. Do we have any citizen comments?
Last one, I promise. Two observations, if I could. There's a lot of debate and talk about what should be put forward, and a lot of times it's killed because someone on the board says, well, that costs money. That shouldn't be the responsibility of this board. This is the planning commission. You guys should be planning for the future of the town. It's up to the select board and the residents to decide whether that's a cost that they want to bear. So I wouldn't table something or put something down just because you think it costs money. That came up a few times tonight in several meetings. It's not your job to find the money. It's your job to plan for the future of the town. The other piece of it is, every meeting I tell you guys, this is the most important board in any town. So you have a lot of work to do to try to fit that into a window. I think is a disservice to the town. This, this board should actually be meeting twice a month, honestly, to get through the work that you need to do. And there's always a lot of clock watching. So if you make an agenda, be smart about the agenda, but just have a start time. You don't have to be limited to an end time. Get through your agenda, and, you know, that's how you're serving the public by getting those items taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, which makes me remember, Rose, are you still there? Oh, because she sent me a text the other day, which is good news for the planning commission. Let me find it. We got a raise. We got a big raise.
So we're at $35 a meeting now?
No, it's $900 a year from the select room meeting, was it?
No restrictions, if you don't show.
No restrictions, we don't show $900 a year, distributed half. Because I joked around with Rose and said, oh, I can go to Hawaii now, and she goes, actually, you might be able to get a ticket. Anyway, we got a raise.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, and it is great, because we were $20 a meeting, I think, for the last, I've been on it for years and years. Thank you, Scott. $25 a meeting, yeah. Yeah, and you didn't get it if you didn't come. Yeah, and you didn't get it if you didn't come, and the DRV was like, whatever, but anyway. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
An hour later.
Second.
8:30, exactly.